Okay. We're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call of the members.
David Kent.
Yeah?
Stephanie Halter.
Here.
Peter Julia.
Present.
Malik Hammond.
Here.
Tom McLaughlin.
He's missing.
And I did receive email from him that he wouldn't be able to make it.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Oh, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome members of the high school civics class who were here to visit with us tonight. And at some point, if you have questions, we'll be very happy to entertain them. First thing that we have to do is review the minutes of our last meeting. I know they were extensive, but I hope you had a chance to browse through them.
You did.
Are there any corrections or deletions which people want to offer?
No.
I didn't see anything in there. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second?
It's made in second to accept the minutes as they've been distributed. All in favor, raise their right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted as distributed. Application for a public hearing for a special exception. Public hearing on a special exception application from Joseph and Suzanne Heard for a fence over four feet in height to be located within the front yard setback of the subject property according to the zoning ordinance. Is anyone here who wishes to speak to that matter?
So, I'm Joseph Heard from 72 Ski Lift. So, if you have questions, I mean, feel free. Main reason for wanting acceptance is because of the neighbor next door uses their property as an Airbnb mainly, and we're looking for to have as much security and privacy as possible from that. It doesn't take away from egress or ingress of anything or of people coming in for firefighters or police or anything like that. It also is off the road enough that there's no driveways next to it or so that it's a safety hazard for something like for people pulling in and out. And it's also a big yard in the front yard there, so it's not like it's just right on top of each other. And it's far enough away from the house. It's more of just a side, it looks more like a side yard away from the front of the house.
If I can inquire, which house is yours? The brown one or the white one?
Mine is the white one. So, those hydrangea bushes are there, and those are as tall as the fence is in the back. So, I had a fence contractor, I had him come in and put it in. I expected him to make sure that it was correct, you know, and everything was done by regulations. And then Tom came by and he was inspecting the house next to us and said, hey, it's supposed to be at four foot in the first two sections. And so now that's why I'm like, okay, well, so let me, it's already up. And I think, I don't know if I put pictures in there with if I did have to cut it down to where it would be, but it's, you know, it's a nice, it steps down, it goes with the land. And if you start cutting it down at that four foot, it just, it really, I think the look of it, it doesn't look as nice and as attractive if you cut those first two panels down.
Joseph? How far does this encroach into the front setback?
So, I do not have a sketch with the dimensions showing the distance of the encroachment. I'm not sure if you have the dimensions.
So, it's from the beginning of the road, it's 15 feet off of the road itself. And then, so I've got my pin for the property sits right there at that first post. So, I mean, you're looking right at the, in the full setback of the 15 feet. So, those panels are eight foot panels, and so you've got two panels there, that'd be 16 feet, that's all the way into that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Did you see that photo? I don't think I saw that one. Oh, I see. Malik, did you see that?
Yes.
I have that. When I reviewed it prior, there was a lot to read over to say, wasn't the requirement within the setback? Six feet is permitted within the, six feet.
Thank you.
So, it's really just divide, is the fence isn't in front of the house, it's dividing the two properties, right?
Yeah, it started out, so the fence is there because with it being an Airbnb, well, first of all, when we did, when we came in and had it surveyed, they were, the other houses encroaching on our property. And so, we really wanted to make sure that, we were going to put a fence up, but, you know, at, but we didn't know how much they were actually encroaching on our property until we got the survey done. But this is prior to, well, we'd already started building the house when we figured out that they had actually, was a big section of it encroaching. We tried to get an easement done between the neighbor and I, and were unsuccessful with coming to an agreement for an easement. And so, we went ahead and put the fence up. And it's, again, if it wasn't being used as Airbnb, it would be a different story to me a little bit because I'd have a neighbor there that's there all the time, not, or at least, you know, seasonally there, you know, but I've got short-term neighbors every other day. And even right before I had the fence put in, I had a, I did put a, like a snow fence up there, just a temporary fence, so that you could see where my lot line is, so I didn't have people coming across. But even with that fence there, I still had those neighbors coming across and walking back up my property. So, you know, I really, I really don't want people over there, especially with them not knowing who they are.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Have we received any other abutters comments?
Nope, we have not received anything from any abutters.
And what is the front yard setback specifically?
Yep, so 15 feet from the property line.
15 from the property line?
Yep.
Okay.
And it is allowable to have a fence right up to the property line or even along the property line to mark that common boundary, but it is, if it's within that front yard 15 feet, it's when that over six foot or over four feet requires a special exception.
Yeah. Are there any other fences in the neighborhood that have a similar height fence?
There are not any other fences. I think we have a neighbor that's two doors down, two on the south side, that has a fence in the backside of this property, but he didn't have anybody next to him either.
Right.
They only have two neighbors because the rest of the lots are vacant.
Okay.
So, Joseph, as I look at the picture that looks sideways from the hill, it doesn't begin out at the road, it's set in to begin with.
Mm-hmm.
Then, he said two, I can't believe the two panels are within the setback. I could believe one, just looking at the picture, but I haven't measured anything.
It's hard to say.
Mr. Heard said that the proper, his property actually starts, his pin starts at the post of the first, so off the road, it may already be.
Yeah, okay.
Might just be deceiving by the angle that it's taken out of the photo.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll recall.
Is there anyone else who wish to speak in favor of the applicant's request for a fence?
Dan Marion, 19 Point of Drive, drive, I'm in favor.
Do you understand that?
He said he.
He said his name and said he's in favor.
In the neighborhood, he's in favor of the fence. Yep.
Dan, are you an abutter or just a neighbor?
Mr. Marion?
Mr. Marion, are you an abutter or simply a neighbor in the neighborhood?
Maybe they're not.
Muted?
It appears he's muted.
He's muted.
He did announce 19 Point of View Drive though, which is just a little bit up the street.
Up the street. Thank you for catching that.
I'm just a neighbor.
Great, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
This is Derek Hamster, I'm an abutter from 68 Ski Lift Lane, so I'm in favor.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is everybody present who wish to speak in opposition to the applicant? Hearing none?
We also, did we not receive?
We've got a report from the code enforcement officer.
Correct.
Is that, can we make that part of the record?
Did we all get a copy of that report?
That was, Tom Newcomb sent that via email to the board. I apologize, it's not printed out in the paper.
Okay. I don't know if I got to see that.
No, I may have it because I got everything in the world.
I didn't print it out because.
I can read it if you'd like.
If you would, please.
Yeah, let me just pull that up, just one second here. Hello, all. I'm not sure if I will be able to attend next Tuesday's ZBA meeting, but I wanted to go on record regarding the special exception application for 72 Ski Lift Lane. As stated by Mr. Heard, there was a misunderstanding regarding the zoning restrictions. I spoke with the installers while they were on site installing the fence. They had started at the front and were working back. At the time, they marked the first panel with tape to show where we agreed to have the panel and first post cut. And speaking with Mr. Heard, he stated that he installed the fence due to issues with guests at the short-term rental home next door. I explained that he could apply for a special exception if he wanted to keep the fence as is, and he agreed to shorten the first panel if not granted. I support the granting of this special exception. I feel that this situation meets the criteria and it fits well with the property conditions. Tom Newcomb, code enforcement officer.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Will we do some findings of fact?
Sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
Perhaps of the applicant.
Go ahead.
You mentioned in your, pardon me, you mentioned in your testimony that that first panel's basically right on the pin. Perhaps I didn't hear you if you mentioned it, but could you tell me how far off that side lot line it is, or is it on the line?
So, we're at least a foot. I'm about between a foot, probably a foot and a half off the side line as well. So, yeah, I brought it in onto my property so that it wouldn't be right on the property line.
Thank you.
Okay, so findings of fact?
Yep.
We have an application for a special exception. It does fall within the regulations for Plymouth by special exception, so this is allowable. We're at a six-foot fence.
You find the fact that it extends into the front setback, which causes the requirement.
Causes the requirement, yes.
That is a side yard fence, not a front.
It's a side.
Side yard fence, not.
Side yard fence.
That encroaches into the front setback.
Yes, yeah. I, sorry, you go ahead.
Findings of fact, the fence height is eight feet? Is that what we heard?
Six.
Six.
I thought it was six feet wide.
Eight feet wide.
Yeah, the panels are eight, the wide panels.
Thank you.
Six feet tall, so it's two feet above what's allowable without a special exception.
Without a special exception, the portion that's closest to the road would need to be four feet instead of six feet.
Understood.
I would like to add a finding of fact that we've heard from three people in favor of this application. One of them, the code enforcement officer, one an abutter, and one a neighbor, and no people in opposition.
I think we should say something about the fact that it's on a relatively steep incline.
It is indeed on sloping terrain, for sure.
Yeah.
You should go further back.
Yeah. The two homes are pretty close together too, right?
Yes.
And one of them does seem to be a rental property.
I think we should have a finding that the need for this is based upon a desire for privacy.
Yeah.
I would add that that need for privacy is due in part to the rental nature of the abutters property.
All right.
Somewhat of a twofer. The fence material and color is wood, correct? Wood?
Yep, it's cedar, yeah.
Cedar, yeah.
Yeah, it's a nice fence.
So, will you stain it or paint it?
We're going back and forth on which what color we would.
We're going to stain it.
Says the wife. Staining it to that color is the post in the front of the house.
All right.
But we were told to wait, that we need to let it go through a season, maybe even two seasons before we should stain.
Yeah.
Before the wood will be ready.
That could make sure. Well, the finding of fact is that there are no other fences like it in the neighborhood or in view, so it in and of itself is unique. And, but, I don't believe it's out of character with the neighborhood. That's one. The second one is, in our zoning ordinance, section four point, excuse me, 414, part D, excuse me, C, the fences shall be located at least one foot, one foot from the property line, which the applicant has indicated, it is at least one foot, perhaps a foot and a half off the property line, which makes it compliant with the zoning regulations.
Great.
In terms of its horizontal.
On his side of the property.
On his side, on the right, subject parcels side of the line. Not sure how to word the next one, but solely based on the applicant's testimony, the abutting parcel of the shared property line, this side property line, the abutter has testified that that house encroaches. So, that would, we would presume it is closer than 15 feet to the property line?
So, the house itself is not, but what they had done, their front yard had been part of, is part of my property. So, where those hydrangea bushes, those hydrangea bushes, there used to be two or three more coming onto my side of the property. So, there was a big triangle section of the road. So, they thought that more of the curb in the road was their actual property. So, when the house, their house was built, it was turned and it was, they just came out parallel with the house in the front yard. So, that was the bigger issue. Nobody knew that it was even an encroachment until we actually got a survey done.
And the trees are yours or theirs?
They're on the other side of the fence, they're theirs.
No, they're on your side of the fence.
They're on my, yeah, those are my, yeah, the same thing is on my side.
The birch is on their side.
Those are ours.
Those are our. Those other three trees, pass that one down to Peter, that'll help. Whoops.
All right.
So, the birch is on the neighbors. The three, what are they, oaks, naples?
It's going to fall down.
The birch is going to fall down?
I think we also should make a finding that the.
Yeah, I already cut down some, in fact, I cut some of their trees down when we pulled up the house.
With their permission.
Yeah, with their permission because it was, they were already starting to fall over.
Yeah.
I think we should make a finding that the dressy side of the fence is towards the neighbor.
Finish side.
The finish side, yes. That's a good one.
All right, we all set? Okay, let's go through the criteria. Let's accept the facts. Read the facts back.
Through here. The application for a special exception is for a use that's allowable by special exception under the zoning ordinance.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The fence extends into the front yard setback, but is a side yard fence. It's the encroachment into the front yard setback that triggers a special exception.
Aye.
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 The fence height is six feet. Without a special exception, the portion closest to the road would need to be four feet.
Aye.
Aye.
The board has heard testimony from the, from an abutter, a neighbor, and the code enforcement officer in favor of the application and no comments in opposition.
Aye.
Aye.
The fence is on a relatively steep incline.
Aye.
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 The two houses are relatively close to each other.
Aye.
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 The need for the fence is based on a desire for privacy.
Aye.
Aye.
The need for privacy is due in part to the rental nature of the abutting property.
Aye.
Aye.
Could you just add on, as reported by the applicant?
Now I.
The fence material and color is cedar, which will be stained.
Aye.
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 There are no other fences like it in the neighborhood, but it's not out of character.
Aye.
Aye.
Zoning ordinance, section 414C, states that fences shall be at least one foot off the property line. The applicant has indicated that this fence is at least one foot from the line on his side of the property.
Aye.
Aye.
Based on the applicant's testimony, there was some encroachment by the abutting property owner.
Aye.
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 The finish side of the fence is facing towards the neighbor.
Aye.
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 And that's the complete list.
Okay, the facts having been found, the criteria first, the proposed use shall only be those allowed in this ordinance by a special exception. Any discussion? Okay, all finding that that's true?
True.
True.
True. The second criteria, the specific site is an appropriate location and adequate size for the use.
True.
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 The use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located.
True.
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 There'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
True.
True.
True. Use will not place excessive or undue burden on the town services and facilities.
True.
True.
True. There'll be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True.
True.
True. All right, anybody want to make a motion, having found those elements?
Some moves.
Seconded.
It's a move in second that we accept the, approve the application as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous. The application is approved.
Thanks so much for bringing that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Questions from the audience? Questions? No, not questions.
No, none? Okay. Let me find back to my agenda here. Just got hopelessly muddled in.
I think I, we have a lot of papers tonight.
All my stuff.
Here's mine.
You got one?
Yeah.
All right. The next is unfinished business. Are there any unfinished business, Joseph?
No, none from my end.
Okay. And the new business is a rehearing motion, which is in the packet of material you've received tonight, and I'd like to say a word or two about that before we dive into it. In our last meeting, we voted against a proposal brought by an applicant for a special exception on the Daniel Webster Highway, which was required for junkyard, and also for Route 3 South, 3A South. And now, the step in the procedure is, having made that denial, they can ask us to rehear the matter, and that's what they've done. We can summarily say, no, what we did is right, that's one option. Another option is to say, well, let's have a rehearing and correct any mistakes we might have made. Or a third option would be, well, let's have a rehearing. If you'll recall, when we began the last hearing, we asked the applicant's attorney if they had followed our suggestion, that the parties get together and write up some conditions which the board could approve if it wanted to allow a special exception to exist, subject to conditions. Their attorney did not create a list of conditions, in fact, said that he didn't have time to work on that over the month because he had a trial or whatever. So, that left it in our lap to either create conditions, which we did not do, or deny the application, which is what we did do. If you believe that creating conditions would be a more just result, we can have a rehearing, and at that rehearing, we can either continue to deny it, we can listen to what evidence comes forward, we could create conditions, or in the alternative, we could just say, no, what we did seems to be correct, and go forward and let the chips fall where they may. If they go to court, the town will have to defend what we've done. What are your feelings on the matter?
My personal feelings are that we did everything properly and that the conditions being drafted were put upon them. They failed to do so. It was not our responsibility to do so in the first place.
And they even said they didn't really agree with all the conditions that were suggested by the town attorney.
Correct.
So, compliance was, was, did not appear to be desirable by the applicant.
Also, well, further, I just make light or make note of the fact that in the correspondence that was given to us as evidence, that in communication between Mr. Kirk and his attorney, Mr. Steiner. in communication between Mr. Kirk and his attorney, Mr. Steiner, that basically, this was a required step for them to take to bring it to us for rehearing prior to them submitting to the Superior Court, which is their assumed intent, judging off the correspondence given.
That's correct. It's, it's, so if we find that we've made errors, we can correct them, and that would be the purpose of the rehearing.
I don't feel like we've made errors.
You don't feel we have? Peter, you any thoughts?
Uh, I have many, but I must first apologize, I'm not sure I was here for either meeting.
You were definitely not for the second.
You weren't for the second.
Yeah. And having just been away for some time, I'm really kinda still not overly present.
Yeah.
Hence my apology. So, I don't have any immediate feedback, other than to parrot what both Malik and Stephanie have said. I find this board to be very efficient, very thorough, very apathetic to all applicants. And I, if I had to render a decision without performing what I consider to be at least minimal due diligence, would probably be to air that it's more than likely this, this board went above and beyond to try to assist or to advise the client, or to ma, or, excuse me, the applicant, and make concessions or recommendations to assist the applicant. So...
There was a lot of opposition from the butters.
I, also, from, and, correct me if I'm wrong, and you have an understanding deeper than mine, but through reviewing the rehearing justifications as set forth in the Board of Adjustments captures appeal, it is, there are a few different criteria that it really revolves one, around one in order to allow the board to correct any errors, first and foremost, as well as right any potential wrongs that were given to either the applicant or to abutters by its decision. None of which I found to be the case prior, nor in the motions for rehearing submitted by Mr. Kirk and his attorney.
The only questionable thing that I ran through as I looked at this was, we did find that there was some risk to the wells in the area from fluids that might leak from the vehicles that were in the field, which would contaminate wells. What the lawyer brings up is, well, that would require expert testimony, there's been no evidence that's ever occurred in the past. We used our own judgment and felt that it was creating a risk, however, in the residential area that it's located in.
I think it was a potential risk.
That's right.
Which...
We just asked for him to test the water.
Yep.
And we didn't even get to the point of actually asking him to test for water, that would have been
A condition.
A condition.
Which he said he wasn't willing to do. And the butters really were, had a lot of concerns about the well.
They do. Okay.
So I can speak to that issue.
Go ahead.
Two reasons. First, there is precedence in this town for similar code enforcement actions for abandoned or stored unregistered vehicles on property. It happened directly across from the street from me, up on New Hebron Road. And it took the town over two years to get that applicant to comply and remove vehicles. I stopped counting at over twenty-five. But there were numerous, and on that property, it was immediately adjacent, if not in, natural resources. So there was other concerns, so that's one reason. The second thing is, the state, Department of Environmental Protection, oh, excuse me, Services, it's N H D E S in this state, they have what they call fact sheets, and they release them to the public. And there is a specific fact sheet that is documented that does, so one does not need to be a professional in hydrogeology, or geology, or groundwater monitoring, or any of the number of sciences that pertain to potential contamination. One only needs to read a standard published fact sheet from D E S that says abandoned vehicles will leak petroleum products and are likely to lead to contaminating groundwater. They don't, you know, go on to say a certain size, or quantity, or soil type, or etcetera, they just say, it's a common fact in this state, it occurs.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you would need a professional to, you know, pin the tail on the donkey, so to speak, to, to, you know, mark X on the spot. But that's not what the board said, the board just said, we have concern of this use. So I think that is a hundred percent legitimized. It has direct application of prior case history in this town, and is supported by common factual knowledge literature prepared by our state environmental services.
That's great. Thanks for sharing that.
The other, one other point was that we made a finding that he's running a junkyard currently.
We did.
And he objects to that, says they didn't, didn't wanna be a junkyard. The application was for a junkyard. That's what the application stated was the request.
Yeah.
It was the request.
Pardon me?
It was the request.
Yeah.
I think our finding of fact was that currently it is.
It is.
So he's, he's been, been running one illegally, right, without special exception.
Yeah, getting the drift that the board wants to leave things the way they are, is that, is that an accurate read?
Uh, for me, aye, yes.
Yes.
Stephanie? Peter?
Yes, I would support the previous actions of this board.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I will.
So moved.
Was that one? Am I seconding now, or?
Yes, you're seconding that.
I second.
The motion's been made and seconded, that we deny the rehearing request, three requests that have been made. Any discussion on that before we vote?
One last, something that he brought up and you, you mentioned, as far as bringing an expert in the field to testify prior to making a judgment of such, it is my understanding, again, and embellishing, correct me if I'm wrong, we are a quasi judicial board. Whereas, although that is welcome, testimony by an expert is more something that will be a requirement for a court of law. Is that not a fair understanding?
I think that's good, yeah.
We're entitled to have our opinions as individuals, members of the board, to bring our own expertise, such as it is. And the standard for an expert in New Hampshire is pretty low.
Pretty low.
Knowledge, knowledge beyond that of the average person.
That's hilarious.
Sorry, okay. Alright, the motion having been made and seconded, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Say aye, or raise your right hand?
Aye.
Aye.
You gonna vote, or you gonna abstain?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. The motion carries with one abstention. I think that's gonna be all we have to do.
The motion was for the three, the three motions.
The three, correct.
Thank you.
Any other business before the board?
I do not have any other business, there is the upcoming land use law conference offered by New Hampshire Municipal Association. There is a registration fee, however, in the past, the town has been willing to cover that fee for board members, provided we have enough money to cover the fee for the number of board members who, who would like to attend. So, that conference is November the sixteenth, from nine AM to three fifteen PM, at Southern New Hampshire University in Manchester. If a zoning board member did want to attend that, and would like to inquire about the town covering that registration cost, it is one hundred and fifteen dollars. Please, you know, let us know, and we can, we can...
Peter's the contract, contact person if you wanna go.
Great.
I'll pick you Joseph.
Joseph. Peter's like, what, I'm not leaving that line. How do I do that?
Joseph, could you email me the information for that?
Yep, absolutely.
I know I'm out of town that day.
I can't remember if I am or not.
I definitely am.
The only other business is what these youngsters might have asked questions. Come on, guys.
You gotta write about something, right?
I don't know if, I just like didn't hear you, I just say what it was, but...
Why don't you come up to the front row, or where we can...
Come up a little bit, so we can hear you.
Um, I might have not heard what you have said, but, um, what was going on on Daniel Webster Highway?
There's a, as you go south from the traffic circle, you're gonna see on the left-hand side what some people refer to as a junkyard of automobiles and the like. It's surrounded by manufactured housing, and that's what, that was why he applied to be a junkyard, because the code, the code enforcement officer said you have to stop what you're doing, because you're running a junkyard, and you don't have permission to be a junkyard.
In the town of Plymouth, you have to have, file an application with the town and be approved to be an official junkyard. You can't, you're not allowed to have more than two cars on your lot that aren't registered?
Three unregistered.
Three, three unregistered cars on your lot, without an application.
And the code enforcement officer of the town, the same owner owns the one that's on the Tenney Mountain Highway that's opposite from the grocery store, as well as this one that's south on Route 3. Same guy owns three different things that are there. And none of them with permission from the town. So the code enforcement officer said you have to stop what you're doing. And this resolution that came to was, come to the board and get a special exception, then you will have permission to do what you're doing, and I won't have to bother you anymore. Well, I think I ought to explain a little bit about the role of this board. I think as was pointed out, we are a quasi judicial board, which means, well, like a court, almost. We don't write the law. We try to interpret and enforce the law as it comes along. We can't look at an application and say, oh, that sounds like a good idea. I know it doesn't fit within the zoning code, but it's a good idea, let's approve it. We, we can't do that. We have to look at the zoning cod, code and say, does it meet the criteria in the zoning code? And in the way we did with the first application, goes through piece by piece by piece, the things that we have to find are true in order to approve it. And if we don't find them all true, in that case there were five, if we don't find them all, we have to deny the application. In the case of the junkyards, I think there were three different criteria that we, we found had not been met. And so if we denied their application. So it's important that you realize, we're not like a planning board, which has somewhat discretion. We don't have a lot of discretion, we simply have a zoning ordinance that we have to enforce. And that, and quasi judicial means like a court. We're sort of like a court. We do operate as individuals, and we have different points of view. Not all the time do we agree on everything, and we have to hash it out until we come to a consensus on, on what we agree with. So that's our role.
Also...
Pardon me?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Also, in specific reference to the property that you inquired about, part of why you might not have heard it is, it has a historical, this is the third meeting where the same properties are being brought before us. The, three months ago, or I guess two months ago, technically, it was brought before the board. Then, that was extended, continued, to last month's board meeting. And at last month's board meeting is when we found a decision, and then now it is being brought before us, or was brought before us, for the request of a rehearing, which tonight we denied.
And the only appeal from that is off to the Superior Court in Grafton County. Whereas, as I recall, the planning board, you can appeal to the selectmen, can't you?
I do not know.
There wa, I believe, so, there, it depends on what exactly the decision is based on, if it's actually a zoning, a decision that the planning board has made in consideration of a piece of the zoning ordinance, they actually can appeal that to the zoning board.
Against to us, yeah.
Okay. Never seen that happen.
It's pretty specific.
Yeah. Okay, guys, yes?
Oh, so I have just one more question. Was someone, was it someone else's fence that was encroaching onto the family of three's land, or?
It was their fence.
It's all on their land.
They built the fence, and after they built it, they realized that it wasn't within the requirements of the town. So the town has requirements for height, right? And they said the, within a certain number of feet from their edge of their property, from the road, it needs to be at a lower height than it was.
You might wanna take one of the pictures with you.
That's really the first two sections of that fence, that just were, were six feet tall, and the zoning ordinance says that they can, they're only allowed to have it be four feet tall. So they came to us to get what's called a special exception, that allows them to keep it at six feet.
Now, one of the things this board could have done, which it didn't do, was to demand that the portion that's encroached be taken down until they get approval. And we didn't do that. We simply went forward with the application. Yes?
Um, would it have been different if, like, the other property wasn't, like, a rental home?
Well, that was a criteria, I, I think, first of all, if people had come and argued against the fence, the decision would have become much more difficult, because we could have weighed what they think is the negative. And we didn't have anybody present any negative. So when it talks about the neighborhood, how does this impact the neighborhood? If a neighbor come here and said, this is gonna be ugly, I don't like it, it's, I can, it blocks my view, if something like that had occurred, that, that would have had a very significant impact on this.
We actually experienced the opposite of that, where multiple neighborhood neighbors mentioned that it was fine, and they supported it.
Yeah, which, that's a big impact, right?
So, the man who first came up, when he was talking about, he put up the fence because of the Airbnb, right?
Yeah.
I think that was primarily because there were people coming and going all the time. And he, walking across his yard, he said...
And he didn't know who they were, right? Yeah.
And is it now this, this criteria for Airbnb in Plymouth, is there not?
Yeah, so that is something that I believe is, is, Tom, the code enforcement officer, actually, he's on, online, he, he is sort of looking into the Airbnb question, because it has been a... Yeah, there is, there is some criteria to that, as far as, you know, the definition of a, of a dwelling unit in Plymouth does not, it specifically states that a dwelling unit is for non-transient occupancy, so that, there is some question there, as far as that, that definition.
Good question.
Yeah, that's one a lot of towns have been wrestling with, right?
We also have a missing member, Tom McLaughlin, and we have someone who is in the process, we hope, of joining the board, because you should have five people all the time. And here, we've only got four. You're entitled to have five. What could make a difference?
Alright, well, thank you so much.
I'd encourage you at least one...
I'd encourage at least one of you to get the agenda.
Well, and further to piggyback on that, all of these are public record, are they not?
Yeah, that, that's true, they are.
So if you'd like, for instance, the application for the fence, in order to reference it, there are some copies here. Which are only gonna be recycled.
Yes.
And Tom is, Tom did offer, if he wanted to, if the board wanted him to discuss the short-term rental question, he'd be happy to, he's online.
I'd also point out, here's an additional one. Another part of our jurisdiction, so to speak, granting of variances, which, and a variance is something which is not allowed in the zoning ordinance, and there are criteria by which we can actually grant somebody's application for something that isn't allowed, as long as criteria are met. It's called a variance. But this is not, some people look at this as the rezoning board, no. The exception has to be relatively minor, it can't hurt anybody else, there's gotta be a particular reason why it's appropriate for this person to ask, because the law, if applied, would be unfair to them.
I can't think about the Tenney Mountain application, right? Maybe, no, when they wanted to build the tower, wasn't that one a variance?
Yeah.
Was that a variance or special exception?
Yeah, no, that, that was a variance because of height.
Because of height.
From the one side to the, yeah.
One side to the other.
Well, a fellow came and wanted to build a, what, six or seven-story building behind the college, behind the university.
That's a good example.
And, you know, we've got a limitation on how many floors you can have in a building, and that certainly was gonna require a variance, and that was just too far out of the scope of whatever was contemplated in this town. Also, a safety issue, because Land Truck couldn't get that high. Other questions? If you read in the newspaper, certainly in the Sun, are we putting it in the Plymouth Record as well?
The Record, yep.
You will see from time to time announcements of things that we're gonna consider at a meeting, so that the public can be aware of what's gonna take place, and Joseph also posts them to the front door, so that people will be aware what's going on, and any member of the public can come in here and, and talk about an application. However, if they're not from the town, they're supposed to tell us they're not from the town, and technically ask permission to speak, which is always given.
So you could go home and ask your parents, have you ever received an Butters notice? If you don't see something in the paper, you miss it in the town, you don't look on the website, if you are in a direct Butter, you will be mailed a notice that says, hey, your neighbor would like permission to put up a fence, or whatever they're asking for, and you receive a copy. Or no, you just get a notice and say the copy is, they don't give mailed the whole application, yeah.
Correct, yep.
You get just a letter that says it's on file, and you could come to the town and view it, under the freedom of information.
And a wise applicant will go visit with the neighbors before the hearing to try to dissuade them of any negative feelings they might have, so they don't come here and unload on us, and suddenly, the neighbor finds out, oh, I didn't know that guy was against this. That, that does sway the board, there's no question.
Also, one last contribution to you guys, if you, this specifically lists out all of the five, multiple criteria for special, special exceptions, six that are listed that we have to kind of go against and find them within any application, so...
And in the applicant's application, they have to write in why they think the criteria's been met. All of it screened by Joseph before it ever gets here. He's, they come in and speak with him and say, what do we have to do, what do we have to fill out, and he collects a fee if a fee is due. Okay? Well, thanks, I hope you do well in your civics class.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining today.
I'll point out, anytime you want to, down by the river is the courthouse, and I don't know if they're gonna have you visit a court trial down there, but you ought to go down there and see a legal trial for misdemeanor, or felony arraignment, or whatever, because that's also part of civics.
Thank you.
Thank you. How great, Matt.
I didn't know that's courthouse. Huh? I thought they actually held...
Down there?
Yeah.
It's a district court. Yeah, I can do that, I did everybody else's.
She's very good. She does it such a way as someone could read it.
Thank you so much, it was very interesting.
Oh, good. When you get old enough, you join.
Always looking for who cares.
You're welcome.
Who's the civics teacher?
Welcome.
Um, Mr. Kylie.
Is he good?
Yeah, he's a good civics teacher.
Good, yeah.
Some people think he's strict, but...
Strict is good.
Well, nobody's perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
So I don't know if, it is a, you know, Tom did mention that he's, he's online. This is a question that has, has kind of come up recently, actually, the question of code enforcement as it relates to Airbnb, short-term rental, or sort of transient rental of a dwelling unit, and I don't know if the board would want to discuss that with, with Tom, but it is, it has been something that there's been a lot of discussion about lately.
So he's done research, he has an opinion, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, and the town has, you know, the town has had, the, basically, the, the read has been that, for a dwelling unit, an Airbnb-style short-term rental, and we try to be careful about how we use the term, because Airbnb is, is, you know, a website that could include things that are not exactly what we're talking about, but generally, you know, a transient rental of a dwelling unit is, is not allowable under how a dwelling unit's defined in, in zoning.
I declare the meeting adjourned.